Twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen. It's a voting, city council voting meeting. And let's go right to the invocation here with Reverend Jay Welker with First Congregational Church and then the pledge led by Councilman Sishka.
Let us pray. Thank you, oh God, for this council, this mayor, the city staff, those who are here to serve on boards of our city. Bless them as they seek to do a very difficult job in very challenging times. And so we pray for your direction and guidance to be theirs as they deal with water and growth and lost airlines and affordable housing and transportation, all the stuff that becomes a part of leading a city. And so give them your wisdom today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's please call roll.
Mayor Mingarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Just a quick announcement, we do have comment cards that you can find back here on the table. And if you would like to comment during public comment on the voting agenda, please fill one out for each agenda item and then get it up to either the city clerk or assistant city clerk up here Cindy, that'd be great. All right, let's do proclamations.
Item A, Sexual Assault Awareness Month for April.
Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas sexual assault can be devastating not only for the survivor, but also for the family and friends of the survivor. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but we can work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victim survivors and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services to victim survivors. And whereas citizens of Prescott are encouraged to get involved and to actively engage in the public, in public and private efforts, including conversations about sexual assault, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how we can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore Greg L. Mingarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. You're very welcome. Did you want to say a few words?
Please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for recognizing and approving this proclamation. As stated in the proclamation, sexual assault sees no barriers by race, gender, sexual orientation, or race, or excuse me, age. It is devastating not only for the survivor, their family and friends, but additionally has a direct impact on our community. This proclamation reinforces that awareness of sexual assault is only one of many steps needed to support those victims in this capacity, while compassionately supporting them through their journey towards healing. When city leadership recognizes this and supports it, you are taking action to support our citizens and we are creating a coordinated community effort which creates a safer and healthier environment for all of us. In addition, I'd like to invite mayor, council, and all in attendance here to please join us Tuesday, April tenth, at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University from five to six-thirty PM, as we host our community rally and march against violence in support of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. There are flyers on the back table, if anybody would like to grab one, and mayor and council, I believe they were included in today's packet. Thank you again for your support. Excuse me.
Item B, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April eighth through the fourteenth.
Well, if you are a telecommunicator at PRCC, please come on down. We are declaring National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April eighth through fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Prescott Regional Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with the emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Prescott Regional Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And now therefore Greg Mingarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim April eighth through fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mayor, council, appreciate you guys making this proclamation and recognizing the staff at PRCC that work so hard to keep our community and citizens and public safety safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, National Vietnam War Veterans Day on March twenty-ninth.
Well, I see some grizzled gray-haired Vietnam War veterans in the audience. I'd please ask you to come down and stand with me for this proclamation.
On March twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, the Senate and the House of Representatives of the United States passed the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of two thousand seventeen, which formally recognizes National Vietnam War Veterans Day as March twenty-ninth every
year and encourages the display of the United States' flag on that day. So in that recognition, the City of Prescott proclaims National Vietnam War Veterans Day, March twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen of this year. Whereas nine point two million men and women served in the United States Military from nineteen sixty-four to nineteen seventy-five during the Vietnam War era. And whereas fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-four men and women died serving the United States during the Vietnam War, and whereas approximately seventy percent of the nation's Vietnam veterans are still alive today. And whereas ninety-seven percent of Vietnam veterans who served there were honorably discharged from service. And whereas most Vietnam veterans received no welcome home, nor were honored for their service after the war ended. And whereas most Vietnam veterans made significant contributions to the communities, state, and nation during their post-military service. And whereas many military veterans, which include many Vietnam War veterans reside in the City of Prescott, and whereas it is only right and proper that the City of Prescott and its residents recognize and honor its Vietnam veterans for their service and sacrifice. Now therefore I, Greg Mingarelli, Mayor of the City of Prescott, do hereby proclaim March twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, as National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and encourage all citizens to recognize and honor these Vietnam War veterans of the City of Prescott, especially on this day. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Prescott to be affixed this twenty-seventh day of March, two thousand eighteen. Greg Mingarelli, Mayor, City of Prescott. And I can say to all you, my fellow vet, veterans, welcome home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Siri, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for your service.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any items that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull eight D, Mayor.
Okay. Item eight D, we can pull that. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items eight A through eight C.
We have a motion second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
It's always a test, isn't it?
Yes, that's, hopefully we'll get better at that as we go along here today. All right, eight D.
I have a question regarding the arithmetic on this particular issue. It reads that the award of a city contract approving a three-year supply with two and one-year options for sixty-five gallon residential containers from Odo Environmental Services using the City of Mesa's contract estimated in the cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, I think myself as a reasonably strong math major, so when I calculate that out to fifty-two weeks a year, at thirty-two dollars and fifty cents per container, it comes out to ninety-two thousand five hundred, including probably some delivery costs and perhaps tax. I was questioning why it's overestimated by a factor of about sixty percent.
Ian Mattingly, city traffic engineer, and I'm also in charge of traffic streets and solid waste divisions. Yeah, and it's a good catch. Obviously, he sent that to us, Councilman Good sent that to us today, and we went through that and just to clarify, we provided some input back, and then we wanted to clarify that for everybody else, so thank you for pulling it. The price that was quoted was, I think, thirty-five fifty or thirty-five sixty per bin, and there was some reference to the amount of bins that we use per week. That should have been stated in a different way. That's our, we typically use fifty, or we have been recently. That does fluctuate up and down. Additionally, there is the tax and the delivery charges. We receive those in bulk loads of fifty, five hundred at a time, so we pay freight and other charges that we incur out of the valley. So the price is probably more close to about a hundred and nine thousand on, if you calculate that all out. But looking back, we spent a hundred and forty-two thousand last year on those, so obviously using a per-week average isn't really the way to go. It's more about our history of what we're spending. And so we're spending about in the one forty, one forty-two range, so that's where we came up with the one fifty. And to clarify, the one fifty contract that you'd be authorizing today does not mean that we're going to go buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of the containers. We're going to purchase them at the price that's cited in the Mesa contract, up to that amount. We do anticipate some additional costs just because of the annexations and the growth that we're experiencing, so we feel like one fifty's a good number. But you're absolutely right, your math was right. We were, you know, if you calculate that out straight by what we wrote, it's not, not correct, so that's, we're clarifying that now. And in the future, we will not provide, you know, that we do fifty a week because that, it fluctuates greatly. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, I imagine that's probably not a real predictable life expectancy for a residential trash container.
Yeah, we don't know how many we're exactly going to use. It goes up and down.
Yeah, I just, I was just scratching my head on the math there, so up to one hundred and fifty makes a lot more sense.
Yes.
So I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying, Ian. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Ian, I saw where it said for forty-three dollars as per unit, and those were for the ninety to ninety-eight gallon, and but it, the item talked about sixty-five gallon, but we're actually purchasing more of the ninety to ninety-eight, sixty, is that right?
Yeah, we primarily buy the sixty-five gallon. I think there, if you look at the contract, there's like ranges of sizes and we get pricing for each. We do buy various sizes. Primarily, we buy the sixty-five gallon. But that, that would also fluctuate what we're getting because we quoted the price for the single sixty-five gallon.
Okay, all right. And the other, I'd like to just point out that by doing this and going through Mesa, that we've saved five thousand dollars, five thousand, five hundred dollars the first year. I mean, so there is a savings by doing it the way we're doing it.
Yeah, even though we don't really talk about the tax and the delivery charges, we would incur those regardless of what contract we went with or what.
So it was a dollar ninety a unit?
We still do save that through this contract.
Okay, good.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Thanks, Ian.
May I recommend approval of consent item D.
Eight D, I have a second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, move on to consent ordinances.
Item A, adopt ordinance number twenty eighteen dash sixteen zero nine, authorizing the acceptance of a public drainage easement from the McCabe Holdings LLC for the Damaron Roadway Reconstruction Project, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance. Item B, adopt ordinance number twenty eighteen dash sixteen ten, authorizing the acceptance of a public sewer easement from James One Ten Investments LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want to pull either one of these? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance consent item, agenda items nine A and nine B.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Okay, moving on to item ten.
Item ten is special event liquor licenses. We have two today. The first one is an application for Sunup Rotary Foundation of Prescott. The event is Double Down Casino Night. The location is eight forty Rodeo Drive, and it's going to be Saturday, May twelfth, from five to eleven. The second special event is application for Prescott Mountain Bike Alliance. The event is PMBA Pint Night, and it's going to be at one five four South Bonazuma, and it's April twenty-fifth to, at, excuse me, four thirty to ten PM.
Okay, thank you. I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to forward special event liquor license applications, ten A one and ten A two, to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval. Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to the regular agenda. Item eleven A.
Item A, appointment of members to the various boards, commissions, and committees to fill vacancies occurring in calendar year two thousand eighteen.
So would we like to invite those that are on these boards and commissions to come forward?
Yes, that would be great. Can all of the new members please come forward?
Just new members or new members?
New members, because I'm doing the old.
Okay.
How you doing?
Just new members, yes.
Hey, Michael.
And reappointments.
And also reappointments, I'm sorry, new members and reappointments.
How are you? I'm doing all right, how you doing? How are you, sir?
We're there.
Four o'clock. Probably the best time, yeah. Cocktail hour.
What I heard.
Cocktail hour. Ah, cocktail hour somewhere.
Do we have everybody? Most of the crowd's up here now, that's good. Well, lots of great familiar faces. We want to thank you on behalf of the council for your service to our community. We could not operate and function the way we do as a city without your help, and so we're deeply grateful for all of you and some that couldn't make it today, for your service to the city. Thank you for serving on these boards and commissions and committees, it's very important to us, and we're grateful for your service. Mayor Protem, do you have something you'd like to say? She's going on vacation tomorrow, she's kind of already checked out, but.
I want to say aloha, no. Actually, I will tell you, I work with Councilman Lamerson and Council, Councilman Blair, and your resumes and what you're offering to the city free of charge is amazing, so we could not, as mayor said, we could not do what we do here in the City of Prescott without each and every one of you, so God bless you and thank you for serving.
All right, I think we're going to have.
Do you want to vote first?
Oh, we're going to do a vote, yep. I got to go back there. All right, entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to approve the recommendations of the council subcommittee for appointments as presented in attachment one, for appointments to the city's various boards, commissions, and committees to fill vacancies occurring in calendar year two thousand eighteen.
We have a motion second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, now we can administer an oath.
Okay, so now, after I give you the oath, it's going to be very important for all of you to go out into the lobby. We have a really cool packet for you. We also need you to sign the oath and leave it with my staff out there, and just make sure you get that done, so we don't want to forget that paperwork. So now, please hold up your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of committee member according to the best of my ability, so I do affirm. Congratulations, thank you so much for your services. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you all for your service. Please head out to the tables out in the lobby.
Hi. Beautiful community. It's good to see you.
Hi. What's going on, George?
All right, thank you, city clerk, for keeping me on track here, earning your money today. Let's go to item eleven B.
Approval of professional services agreement for customer service computer software and support with Simple View LLC.
Mayor and council, John Heine, Community Outreach Manager and Prescott Tourism Office. You have before you today a professional service agreement between the City of Prescott Tourism Office and Simple View LLC. The agreement provides for software, training, management, to assist the tourism office, really managing leads, prospects, and opportunities for the tourism office. This will create a customized database with templates and information sharing, and again will assist in efficiency for the Prescott Tourism Office to generate and bring leads to our tourism partners throughout the city. We do have on the phone Randy Fortis with Simple View. Hopefully, he is monitoring here and has his phone off in case we have any questions that you would like to follow up with. Basically, this is a web-based platform, so it's all in the cloud, as it were, and it's designed to assist our staff with meeting and convention sales, client services and referrals, group tour, travel and trade opportunities, consumer visitor services, expense tracking, and communications, and hosting for DMO management as well. So it really is a broad-based platform, it really, and Stuart is here with the tourism office and is really going to assist her a great deal. Anne goes to several shows per year. She also reaches out to organizations and generates leads for the tourism office. This will help her manage those leads. I talked to Anne yesterday, she sent me some information. She's going to several shows, you know, currently right now, and she's got over a hundred and twenty-five new leads coming in, so this will help her manage all that. So the contract is for the first year, the initial startup is thirteen thousand four hundred dollars, and then annually for four thousand eight hundred dollars. This would come from the transient occupancy bed tax for tourism. It will also, however, assist us in our economic development leads as well, so lead management software as well.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, John. We'll go to Councilman Good.
Yeah, I have a question, John.
Yes.
Reading in Forbes magazine recently about the dramatically expanding number of software programs and their effectiveness. My question here is, this is in essence a six-year contract, three-year contract with an automatic three-year renewal. That seems particularly long for a software program when so many new programs are coming on the market, old programs become obsolete pretty quickly, and often you'll get a more robust program at lower cost.
Sure.
So why isn't this at least a three-year with an option to renew rather than an automatic renewal?
Sure. Well, actually, I did research this. I looked at the contract before the meeting today, and actually, the way the contract reads, it's a one-year with three-year renewal, so I apologize, in my report, that was erroneous. So it's one year and then optional automatic renewal for three years, so it's four years total. However, the city does have the opportunity to, you know, be released from the contract if there's any breach or anything.
So we can opt out on those renewal periods?
Yeah, it's, it's an automatic renewal unless we, you know, if we have to opt out for breach of contract or anything like that.
If you look at section four, no, five, five, the term is three years. At the end of the initial term, it talks about automatic extension, but both parties have to agree. So, and then there are provisions about sixty-day notice to quit at any time during the initial term. So it's, it's, both sides have to agree. I think automatic is not really the right wording. Mutual consent, meaning if the city were to opt out after the three years because there's a better program or something more effective, we could opt out with, with notice after the.
So these three additional one-year terms are with mutual agreement at both times?
Correct. Three, and it's one year at a time. And I think automatic, again, maybe not the best wording. What, it should have administratively, in other words, it's, doesn't have to come back to council. Yeah, so when it's, if it's renewed, I think that's really the better terminology.
For my concerns, if it turned out that we did have access to a better. Sure.
So, why isn't this at least a three-year with an option to renew rather than an automatic renewal?
Sure. Well, actually, I did research this. I looked at the contract before the meeting today. And actually, the way the contract reads, it's a one-year with three-year renewal. So, I apologize, in my report, that was erroneous. So, it's one year and then optional automatic renewal for three years. So, it's four years total. However, the city does have the opportunity to, you know, be released from the contract if there's any breach or anything.
So, we can opt out on those renewal periods?
Yeah. It's an automatic renewal unless we, you know, if we have to opt out for breach of contract or anything like that.
If you look at section four, no, five, the term is three years. At the end of the initial term, it talks about automatic extension, but both parties have to agree.
Yep.
So, and then there are provisions about 60-day notice to quit at any time during the initial term. So, it's... Both sides have to agree. I think automatic is not really the right wording. Mutual consent, meaning if the city were to opt out after the three years because there's a better program or something more effective, we could opt out with notice after the...
So, these three additional one-year terms are with mutual agreement at both times?
Correct. Three, and it's one year at a time. And I think automatic, again, maybe not the best wording. What... It should have administratively. In other words, it doesn't have to come back to council.
Right.
Yeah. So, when it's... If it's renewed, I think that's really the better terminology.
For my concerns, if it turned out that we did have access to a better program, we could not opt to renew.
Correct.
Within a 60-day notice period?
It's a three-year term with one-year renewals, but mutual consent. So, in other words, if the city decides to opt out, we opt out.
And just talking about the updates, too, and understand the concern, one of the things I went on the website for Simple View today, too, and they do update their software on an ongoing basis. It does reside in the cloud. It's not a program that we're buying and installing in our computers. So, they do continually update, and that is part of the contract as well. So, this is, you know, from what we've seen, this is proven in other destination management organizations. Scottsdale uses it. They use it throughout the country. So, this is... There are many different lead generation and customer relation management software platforms out there. This one is dedicated to DMOs, which is what we are, a destination management organization.
And are costs fixed over the term of the agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you. Councilman Good, I looked at it, it looked like a six-year contract. Did a little bit more research on it. And the one thing that I thought I just heard you say, Mr. Palladini, was we do have the opportunity to look at this every year. Because very similar to Councilman Good, my concerns are that in technology today, everything changes overnight. I mean, there could be all kinds of things that are new tomorrow, you know? Just because we like what we see today doesn't mean that there's not something better tomorrow.
Just to clarify, it's a three-year term with three one-year options that... After three years, the city could opt out and go in a different direction.
Well, I have a concern with being obligated for three consecutive years for the same stuff if we don't have the ability or the flexibility to move on a dime if something's different.
So, that goes then to the appropriations language in paragraph seven. So, if money isn't appropriated for this type of contract, then it would be canceled automatically at the end of the term for what that's being funded. That's... There's an appropriations clause in almost all of our contracts and this kind of thing. But that's only if you're not gonna appropriate the funds. So, it is a three-year term. I assume, based on the pricing, where it's $8,000 and then four and four roughly, that there's some sort of startup cost or...
That's what the first year is, yes.
We're talking two different things, John, from my perspective, okay? I'm concerned that the council has the flexibility with working with... If something changes in the first year, that would warrant us doing something different with regards to software, because software changes really quickly. And there could be something different within the first six months. But I don't want to be hamstrung with the same software for three years.
Well, that's... And I'm not sure I'm speaking the same language, because I'll defer to John, but it's a three-year contract. So, unless the council chooses not to appropriate on subsequent budget years, it is a three-year agreement. I'm not necessarily sure that that means we're stuck with a product that's never going to evolve. I'm assuming that software is always constantly updating and upgrading.
And as I mentioned to Councilman Good's question, they do automatically update and upgrade the software on an ongoing basis, and that's part of the contract. So, we don't... We're not gonna get stuck with a static program over three years. It will continually be updated for us.
Thank you. Now, that's on public record, and I appreciate that.
Of course.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you. John, I know previously, the Tourism Advisory Committee and Tourism Office had looked at another system.
Yes.
Couple of years ago, that was like much more expensive and did not provide nor have the flexibility. You know, I understand the three-year concern, but it also takes a while to implement.
It does.
And I guess I would say I appreciate the research that you've done, and you've found something that is affordable. And again, this is coming out of bed tax, which pays for itself, because we just bring in more bed tax by using systems like this. So, I think that's important, just to say that to the public.
Yeah. For in terms of return on investment, one qualified lead will more than pay for the software program.
That's right. That's right.
Councilman Sishka.
Thanks, Mayor. I think we need to give the company who is providing this to us some level of stability. And so, you know, we can't just say, all of a sudden, in six months' time, we're going somewhere else. Because then that's gonna restrict who bids on our projects going into the future. I think that three years where there are constant software upgrades is probably pretty logical for both of us.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, you missed my point, Steve. You took it differently than what my intention was. Of course, you do that a lot. My intention was to ensure that we're not stuck with the same package on a regular basis if it changes. That was the point. I have confidence in the people we hire. I just want to make sure that because of a contract, we're not stuck with what we agreed to begin with, if we want to change it, or if she sees the point of changing it.
And I had no problem with what you said, Councilman. I was just stressing that the company who is providing this for us needs some stability, like we need stability. And so, our arguments are mutually exclusive.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the council? Any public?
No, Mayor.
So, just as a reminder, if you would like to comment on an agenda item, there's a comment card. If you could fill that out for each agenda item and get it up to the city clerk... Oh, Daniel, you have a comment?
Oh, I...
Oh, you're showing everyone. Thank you so much. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve contract number 2018-179 between the City of Prescott and Simple View LLC for professional services and software to assist the tourism office in customer relations management CRM activities in the amount of $13,400 for the first year, then an annual fee of $4,800.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Let's move on to item 11C.
Award of City Contract to B4 Enterprises Incorporated for the Alacon Street Drainage Improvement Project.
All right. And it looks like we have Steve here.
Yes, we do. Good afternoon. My name is Steve Oros, Public Works. And item before you today is a drainage improvement project for North Alarkin between Willis and Sheldon Streets. This is to improve the drainage in that area. It'll be an underground system to capture the surface water and keep it from going to... Or reduce it from going onto private property. It was designed in-house and reviewed by outside consultants as well, so we have a good product. We did publicly bid the project, received four bids. The low bid is from B4 Enterprises. We verify that they do have Arizona work experience and an Arizona contractor's license, and they were below the engineer's estimate. We've met with them and confirmed their understanding of the project, and we are recommending that you award the bid as proposed. The work will be pending approval today. The work will be completed before the end of the fiscal year, not calendar year, fiscal. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. Councilman Blair?
Just a question, Steve. This company is out of Cedar City, Utah.
Correct.
And they're $100,000 lower than the second bid. We've never used these folks before. Is there a pretty well-thought-out process of screening these folks?
Yes, there is. And we... The company has several principals that have worked for the city in past configurations. They primarily do a lot of concrete work, which this project is primarily 90-some percent all concrete. It's a specialty concrete project, so that's why we have these two other bidders that we normally haven't seen very often bid on the project this time. And their specialty is what this project's all about.
It's nice that you see it below engineer's estimate as well.
We like that, too.
Thank you.
Councilman Sishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Steve, when I first heard about this project and the fix for this project, it was gonna be above-ground level at street level. You know, there were gonna be things built up and things like that. Was this something that kind of evolved from that?
Those above-ground improvements did not meet the reduction of the flooding potential that we have as our standards, so they did not move forward. This underground system does meet our standards.
So, let me ask you this. You know, we are an above-ground drainage city by and large. Does this translate into other street projects going underground, or are we working to do those things from the standpoint of, you know, looking at them from above-ground fixes for drainage?
Good questions. We currently have a mixture of above-ground surface drainage within the curb limits, bar ditches, et cetera, as well as some underground storm drain systems within the city. This system is a combination of the two. It takes surface water in one area, puts it underground where there's a potential for flooding, puts it out in an area that has some additional flow capacity, historic flow capacity, and then it eventually drains into yet another underground system, and then, in this case, goes out to Granite Creek. So, it's a mixture of both. And we do evaluate both surface and subsurface drainage improvements on our projects, and we try to make improvements to the existing conditions as we can, as long as there's fiscally responsible improvements.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2018-190.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 11D.
Acceptance of Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family Sexual Assault Response Team's Grant Program and Approval to Create a New Detective Position.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Debbie Black, Police Chief. The Police Department requests approval to accept the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family Sexual Assault Response Team grant. The total grant is $115,100. That's $86,325 from the grant, and match funds and $28,775 for a one-year period, January 1st, 2018, to December 31st, 2018. So, the grant funds will go to the salary and benefits for the detective and related training. This is a 12-month contract with additional renewable options based on the availability of federal appropriations and at the sole discretion of the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family. The grant cycle is expected to end December 31st of 2021. This is also a request to approve the creation of a new detective position within the Investigation Section of the Police Department. The grant will allow the department to provide a higher level of service to victims of sexual crimes by having a detective assigned full-time to these investigations. This will be a multidisciplinary approach, applying best practices in conjunction with the Yavapai County Attorney's Office, our victim advocate, and the Yavapai Family Advocacy Center to provide the best service possible to our crime victims. The department currently does not have a full-time detective assigned to sexual violence cases, so any detective on call may be assigned to that case. A full-time detective dedicated to sexual violence cases will have additional training and certifications in sexual assault investigation, enhancing not only our response to victims, but also our ability to conduct investigations and seek justice on their behalf. In 2016, the Prescott Police Department took 110 reports on sexually-related crimes, and in 2017, we saw an increase to almost 140. That's a 20% increase. Also of note, 40% of those victims were 15 years or younger. The Prescott SART detective will participate in the multidisciplinary team response to child sex trafficking, along with other enforcement partners in the area, the County Attorney's Office, juvenile probation, and the Advocacy Center. Having a dedicated sexual crimes detective will allow the other detectives in the section to focus on their area of expertise and knowledge, and relieve some of their caseload to work on other violent crimes, complex fraud, and high-profile property investigations. The detective will also oversee the department's sex offender accountability program and sex offender notification process. Personal and benefits match will be $25,025, and will be taken from the city's general fund for this fiscal year and will be part of the police department budget in upcoming years. Training match will be $4,000, and will be taken from our current FYI team budgeted training funds for the department. Either I or Lieutenant Jean Brambilla are happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Chief. Let's see. Questions, council? Yes, Councilman Good?
Chief, this is a one-year grant amount, correct?
Correct.
And you're asking that we bring in a detective to handle this responsibility on a permanent basis?
Mayor, Councilman Good, the expectation would be, if for whatever reason the funds weren't available, we were not renewed for the second year of this grant, that that position will be absorbed in the department. We would no longer be able to dedicate a detective to this work. If the grant goes away, that position will be absorbed into our previous...
So, we would be adding an additional officer permanently?
No, we would eliminate the position if we no longer had the funding. So, this...
So, you're gonna hire a detective for one year?
Councilman Good, the reality of our staffing is that we have attrition that would absorb that position. So, I don't anticipate that we would be overstaffed for any significant length of time.
So, you would maintain your current staffing position except for the first year? Because you're pretty fully staffed at this point. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, what we would hopefully know in well in advance of January of 2019, if this was not going to be renewed, we would either not fill a position going into the academy and then we would go down to what our current number of 68 is, or if we did not have that vacant position available, we would not fill the next vacant position upcoming. I really don't see this as a significant issue.
Well, yeah, if you have normal attrition and you lose a couple of officers, then if you lost three, you'd hire two back, and then you'd end up with a net equal staff.
That's correct. And I do feel very confident that the funding will be available for the full term till 2021.
How effectively do you think you're dealing with these cases now, having them dispersed through your other detectives?
I think our detectives do a fine job. These can be very, very complex, very, very taxing investigations, requiring multiple interviews and a lot of different investigative techniques. I think that having a dedicated detective will enhance our ability not only to conduct those investigations, but also to provide a great level of service to victims.
And how do you measure your effectiveness? You were saying that last year you had 140 reports. Do you measure that by how many reports are cleared or prosecuted? How does that work?
Councilman Good, in this particular area of offense, it's very difficult to measure it by prosecution or by arrest and charges filed, because there are so many different factors that can affect that outcome. Of the 32 cases that the Yavapai County Prosecutor took in sexual-related offenses at the felony level, Prescott had half of those cases. So, I think that we are doing a good job. I think that, you know, part of it is how the victim feels. That case was investigated and the evidence collected, and how effectively, how they felt with, you know, the way the case was managed. They don't always end up in arrest, sadly. The other thing is, we know that these crimes are dramatically underreported, and I think that our additional commitment to this area might actually net more reports, more investigations, and ultimately, holding offenders accountable, because that's really the business that we're in.
This is a new program, is it not?
No. I think it's one of the first times we've applied.
How long has it been in effect?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Have we checked with any other departments to find out? Have we checked with any other departments to find out if they, in fact, have been able to increase their effectiveness by dedicating a detective to this area?
Prescott Valley, and I think the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office both have received investigators under this grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to Councilman Good's comments, Chief, my concern on effectiveness, I think you answered pretty well, that it's pretty hard to measure. One thing I know is, you know, we have the wall of shame at my shop, and I can just tell you that since I've had that there, the increase is astronomical with the amount of sex offenders whose face gets plastered on my wall within a three-mile radius of my store. Maybe the time has come to acknowledge the fact that Prescott isn't the nice little hometown without crime that we were at one time in history, that we do have things going on here that may necessitate having somebody on a regular basis to approach some of these issues. So, you know, while we're concerned with dollars and cents, and I know that during the last process, we didn't really want to add any personnel, you know, you may not want to add personnel, but you may want to absorb a new type of product for the community's safety, well, it's going to take somebody to do that job. Because that's not a job that you can just hand to anybody to do. That's a job that's a very specialized type of work, I would presume. I wouldn't know much about it, other than the fact that my wall looks like a roadmap man with the people that have moved into Prescott, that now whether they're coming through, federal government putting them here, state government putting them here, whether it's drug rehab, whatever the case is, they're here, and we need to address it. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Mayor Broten?
Yes, Chief, I'd just like to thank your department for applying for this grant, because I do think this is a specialty area, and I 100% behind this, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I would like just to keep on that. Solely because the money goes away next year doesn't mean the crime went away. So we're going to have to figure out how important on the ruler of priority addressing this issue is in the city. I mean, it's, I would much rather address this than just simple dog barking, that's my point.
I'd echo those comments. Thank you so much, Chief, and Lieutenant Brambilla, for your work on this and applying for this. Entertained a motion?
Mayor, move to approve acceptance of Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family Sexual Assault Response Team's Grant Program in the amount of $115,100, R., F., G., A., N., O., S.T.-S.A.R.T. Am I supposed to read all that? S.A.R.T.-18-010118-00, contract number S.T.-S.A.R.T.-181010118-03, and creation of a new detective position.
Good job. Councilman Blair?
I picked the wrong one.
Yeah, you did. You got to do your research before you pick which motion you're going to do next time. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to Item 11E.
Approval to purchase one Battalion Chief Ford F-250 from Peoria Ford.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mike Carr, Fleet Services. Fleet Service Division, working in conjunction with the Fire Department, is requesting authorization to purchase one new battalion chief vehicle to replace the existing battalion chief vehicle that has met the city's criteria for replacement. The vehicle being purchased is a 2018 Ford F-250, outfitted with lights, radio, and camper shell from Peoria Ford using the Maricopa County contract. The vehicle replacement was reviewed by the Fleet Asset Review Board and approved for FY18 replacement. The FAB considered the age, mileage, and work order history of the vehicle. As you know, Fleet Services replaces aging vehicles used in emergency operations, which are at or approaching six years old or 100,000 miles, have reached the end of their useful life, or becoming mechanically unreliable for emergency operations. The Prescott Fire Department utilizes the battalion chief vehicle for emergency response and support. The vehicle requires regular maintenance to ensure reliability and maximum useful life. As you're aware, as the vehicle ages, key components suffer failures requiring repair or replacement, and repairs and replacements escalate each year that a vehicle's in service. Vehicle 1221 is a 10-year-old F-250 with over 140,000 miles on it. At this age, we're suffering failures of electrical systems, and currently has an issue with the motor, which would be required to be replaced at a cost of around $10,000. The repairs exceed the vehicle's resale value and is not recommended by Fleet Services. Fleet Services is utilizing the Maricopa County contract in order to receive the best pricing possible on emergency vehicles. Pricing has been compared to local dealerships, and has been determined to be the most beneficial method for purchasing the assets. And I would like to emphasize that the funding of the replacement vehicle has been budgeted within the FY18 Vehicle Replacement Fund, and will not have an impact on the Fire Department's fund or the general fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Councilman Blair?
I just found it interesting, and maybe you can explain it to me, that we're buying a vehicle for $33,655 and some change, and the aftermarket equipment you're equipping it with is almost $30,000.
Yeah, aftermarket upfitting is quite extensive and expensive. As you know, from the police cars, it's kind of similar equipment and similar upfitting, minus gun locks and a few other items. But they have the radios, the sirens, the rumbler, they have the M-Com equipment that flashes the lights to let them know they're coming, all the flashing lights around the vehicle.
Beverage carrier.
Sure, we have one in there, we do. You know, it's their office, so they're in it for, you know, eight hours a day. So there are, it's really a basic configuration.
What do we do with the equipment that's in that vehicle? Do we try to salvage any of it? Do we move it to other?
Great question. Yeah, so essentially, it's almost like you had alluded to before, or Councilman Good had alluded to before, with the technology and going through the years, a 10-year-old vehicle, the technology is vastly different, especially with the upgrades in LED lighting that we have nowadays. Stuff doesn't really go across the board. Like, we couldn't take the old truck and completely strip it and put it on the new truck, it wouldn't work. But we do salvage when we send these vehicles to auction, similar to what we've done with recently with the PD vehicles. We take lights and sirens and radio components and the computer mounts and everything out that we can, and we have vehicles of likeness. We are able to replace those components in those vehicles as they fail, which does help us. So as we're going through attrition and getting rid of the older vehicles, we're taking the parts and able to keep some of the other older vehicles that are still in service running, and it keeps the downtime relatively low for all emergency service, so it's been beneficial.
I appreciate it. I just thought maybe we could outfit the mayor's mountain bike with some of that stuff.
We got some available?
That'd be great. Questions, other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion. Thanks, Mike.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2018-192.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, let's move on to Item 11F, if I'm not mistaken.
Approval of preliminary plat for 130 North Condominiums at 130 North Cortez Street.
George?
Sir, thank you. For those who don't know me, I'm the Planning Manager for the City of Prescott. This is a request for preliminary plat of a condominium within an existing structure downtown. This building was originally constructed on the site prior to 1895, was reconstructed in the 1900s. That's interesting information. So we have a reuse of an existing, very old existing building in town to create eight condominium units. Six of them would be residential units, two are commercial units. The condominium process requires a subdivision plat, but because this is already inside of an existing building, there's no exterior changes or modification that we should see as part of this process goes forward. The plat will create lot boundaries within the interior units. They will eventually come back to us with a final plat, and following that final plat with construction plans to actually finish out those units to make livable units or the commercial units on the ground floor. There is adequate space for parking at the rear of the building for the residential units. Because this is in the downtown business district, there's no requirement for parking on the commercial units. Street parking suffices for most commercial downtown. We do have a property owner available to answer any questions. I have a copy of the plat, I'm not going to put it up, it's entirely too hard to read at this scale, but if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And again, the property owner is in attendance if you have questions for her.
Yep. For some of us who've been around a little while, this is the Prescott Racket Club Downtown. What is it called?
Athletic Club.
Athletic Club, yeah, yeah. Questions, comments from the council?
Great reuse.
That's a great reuse for that.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I just want to say thank you. I don't know if you would like to stand up so we can recognize you. Oh, right here. This is exciting, would like to see more of this, so thank you.
My pleasure.
Yeah.
Councilman Good?
As well, I want to thank you for keeping the historical nature of this building intact. It reinforces our historic condition of the city, and being able to kind of repurpose it interiorly is certainly more effective and efficient, but it retains our historic history, so I thank you for doing that.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. Thank you for investing in downtown Prescott, right across the street from me, bringing in, bringing in the opportunity for more people to live, shop, and play in downtown Prescott, rather than rolling up the carpets every day. So, you know, this won't be an inexpensive venture, but thank you.
I did this with you in mind.
I know you did. I knew you did.
That's great.
All right, thank you, George. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the preliminary plat for 130 North Condominiums, creating eight condominium units.
Second. We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Move on to Item 11G.
Approval of final plat for Walden Ranch Phases 3 and 4A.
George, again.
Mayor? This is the next step in a normal plat process. The subdivision preliminary plat that you just approved will result in a final plat eventually. In this particular case, Walden Ranch preliminarily platted in phases that was presented to and adopted by council when you approved the preliminary plat, to allow for sequential extension of utilities through the property as the developer builds. He doesn't have to build all the infrastructure at one time, builds in phases. And those phases are established on the preliminary plat to allow council to do what you're being asked to do today, and that is approve final plats one piece at a time. In this particular case, there are two phases. Phase 3 is indicated on the map on the overhead, and Phase 4 looks like a much larger piece, which it is, primarily open space in this particular piece, to allow for the planned area development concept that was originally approved by council. Phase 3 accounts for 49 lots of the full 215 at total, once all of the phases have been accomplished. Phase 4A accounts for seven lots, and are really only a small portion right here that will include those lots. The remainder of this is open space that's part of the original subdivision approval. The additional phases will be back before you for future final plats, similar to the ones you've already dealt with. These two today make a major step forward for the developer in extending his infrastructure and creating the additional lots to sell. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those, and we do have a representative of the developer here.
Okay, thank you, George. Councilman Blair?
Well, first of all, I want to, the developer always gets a nasty comment out there about, you know, destroying Prescott. But I'm going to say that this development has done a very wonderful job in what they had in mind for the Walden Farms. My question would be is how soon can we see final connectivity of Walden Farms to the roundabout for ingress egress for public safety?
So one thing that, one thing that Phase 3 will do is actually complete portions of this roadway, and that is exactly the connection you're talking about. So by approving this phase, you're taking the next step towards making that connection occur. It may not fully occur with this phase, but this is a necessary step to get there.
What phase would full connectivity take place?
Can you answer? It is through this one, so you will complete it by the end of this.
This connects to the improvements that are being made right now.
So they'll finish out that roadway.
Thank you for that. I know that, that it's been well, I can't imagine where all the people are coming from, actually, but it's been very well welcomed. A lot of lots have sold, and so my primary concern is ingress egress for public safety, and I'm glad to see that the road's going to be completed. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Entertained a motion?
Mayor, move to approve final plat for Walden Ranch Phases 3 and 4A.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Let's move on to Item 11H.
Approval amendment with AMEC Foster Wheeler for the Granite Creek Dam Outlet Rehabilitation Project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Eric Bay, Public Works. This next item before you is for Stage 3, the final stage of the Granite Creek Dam Rehabilitation Project. Stage 1, approved back in October, was for the detailed design and the development of two GMPs for the construction required for the repair of the dam. That stage is almost complete. Stage 2, which was approved back in January, was essentially GMP number one, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Construction Number One. I've casually been referring to this as the stabilization construction phase, because this construction will make the dam safe for the rest of the rehabilitation project. Stage 3, before you today, is the rest of that construction. Where in Stage 2, we're installing a slide gate to isolate the 36-inch conduit. Now that that conduit is stable, we can remove the valve core into the dam, and then put in a new sleeve, and then hang a new valve at the 36-inch. In Stage 2, where we're providing a thrust block on the 48-inch valve, now in Stage 3, we're going to hydrologically excavate the sediment near that, build a cofferdam, lower one very brave individual down to the bottom of the lake and into that conduit, and then pressure-grout it back to basically create a solid, non-active conduit as required by ADWR. So through this process, we have been working very closely with the design-build team, the designer, the onsite contractor, the commercial diver. We're comfortable with the GMP, and we're recommending a ward today. And with that, I will take any questions that you may have on this dam project.
On the dam project. Councilman Blair's, he's volunteering to be the guy you lower down in the tube.
Yeah.
Councilman Blair?
The only thing I, I would be curious about, and I'm sure that it would be part of Prescott's history, that maybe it be filmed or videotaped so that we can see how they actually do that? I mean, we talk about it, and it's a very expensive project, and there is some life safety issues that go along with it, but I think it'd be very creative to be able to film that if they could.
Yes, I agree, and this project has garnered a lot of attention to date. The Prescott Media, The Courier, has contacted me about this project, and will be covering it to some extent, I know. We will also have a variety of city staff there monitoring the project and taking photographs while they're there. We could look into some sort of maybe drone imagery of when the access is going to the 36-inch conduit platform that we're building to increase safety with this project, and then get like a 360 view of the dam, of the slide gate installation, the valve replacement, the thrust block installation, and the cofferdam is, of course, going to be underwater. So we'll see one guy go below the water surface, and then he'll appear several hours later, so it probably won't be too exciting to watch. so it probably won't be too exciting to watch.
Put a GoPro on you when we put you down there.
So we've already done some preliminary exploration underwater, and the sediment in Watson Lake prevents like any sort of discernible camera feed. We thought about that, and it's a good thought, unfortunately, it's just, it's probably not going to work.
Yeah. Councilman Good?
I just want to know when you're going to have the drawing for the short straw.
I believe it's this Friday.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on this dam project.
Mayor, I move to approve Amendment Number Two for Contract Number 2018-037A2.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Eric. Item 11I.
Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1611, amending the zoning of certain property within the City of Prescott, generally located at West Gurley Street and North Summit Avenue, from Business General Zoning District to Downtown Business Zoning District.
Good afternoon, council members. Mayor, my name's Katie Peterson. I'm the Community Planner in Community Development Department. So I'll be going over a quick overview of, of this, and then if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those. So this is a proposal for a rezon from Business General to Downtown Business at 434 West Gurley Street. The proposed project name is The Lofts at Twin Cedars. What I'll be going over is the site lots, location, then the existing zoning quickly, and the proposed rezon points. There was a Planning and Zoning Commission action on March 15th unanimously devoted to recommend approval of the rezon. Site plan review is still to come, so there will be an action by Planning and Zoning Commission upcoming in April sometime for recommendation to City Council at a later The general location on West Gurley, as you can see on the map, this is just west of the, the core downtown business district. At the corner of Summit and Gurley, just east of Summit Avenue, and this is just south of, of the church. There's an existing building right on Gurley Street. Behind that is a parking lot and structure. This is actually three different lots on one site. And the general zoning in the area, as you can see, is Downtown Business, to the east, Business General, more to the west, to the north, there's some, and to the south, there's some multifamily zoning. So the current lot has two different, two different zones on the site. As you can see, there are three parcels within that black area. The existing building is in the downtown business zone. The two parcels within the site just to the north adjacent are a combination of Business General and Downtown Business. So the proposal is for these three contiguous parcels with two different zones to be rezoned so there's one consistent zone of downtown business instead of a mix of Business General and Downtown Business. All three parcels are designated as commercial in the general plan, so it is consistent with the general plan, and there are no proposed changes to that. We'd create one consistent zone, and all three parcels would be combined into one parcel through an administrative process before they are allowed to go forth with the, with the building permit application process. So just to go over some main points of the proposed rezon, under the current zoning, proposed buildings would sit on the two different zones. With the proposed rezon, we'd create one consistent zone of downtown business for the entire site. There would be the lot combination to create one lot. The rezon would allow buildings to be located in one zone rather than two, so the proposed site plan includes a building that would sit across the existing lot lines. The proposed rezon is consistent with the general plan and surrounding zoning as well. The proposed abzone would allow a slightly higher housing density for more units. And this is the site plan if anyone has questions about some of the dimensions that are included in the zone. So I can get into more details, but I wanted to give the general overview of what the proposal is and what the existing zoning is first.
Thank you, Katie. Questions, comments from the council?
Pretty straightforward.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I attended the Planning and Zoning Meeting where this was proposed, and there was a question why the rezoning and the final plat weren't considered and approved together. And my understanding is in order for the developer to qualify for some state funds for this because there is a 60% designated veteran residential requirement to get those funds. So there was a deadline that the developer needed to meet to get that rezoning, so they decided to split the action and then consider the, the final plat design at a separate time. So the fact that we're going to have some more housing for our veterans is very helpful and appreciated. Thank you.
Agreed. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Katie.
Mayor, I do have three speaker cards.
Oh, good, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
First one is Daniel Mattson.
Good afternoon. Hello, Daryl. Anyway, I really recommend that you would go forward with this. Catholic Charities is a wonderful asset to our community as far as helping alleviate homelessness. They've been doing a lot of work and will be doing a lot of work, and this is a big part of their plan going forward. I would highly recommend that it be approved, and I was at all the general planning meetings. This is really a wonderful thing. We wanted more workforce housing and more affordable housing. This will free up a lot. Really a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is Catherine Roussing.
Hi, my name's Catherine Roussing, and I live at 350 Park Avenue. I just wanted to, I agree with everything that Daryl said. I just want to let you know I'm the daughter of a career military veteran. I'm a retired registered nurse who worked at the Audie Murphy VA in San Antonio, and my husband and I, for many years, have owned a small apartment complex at 126 North Summit Avenue, which is just north of this site and across the street from the school. And I just wanted to say that I do support Catholic Social Services and their homeless veteran programs, but I would also like to say that this is going to be more than an apartment complex. Our veterans, our homeless veterans are a special population with many needs, and I'm afraid it is going to be more of a part rehab hospital assisted living and hotel. My main concerns are traffic. A huge amount of support is needed for the veterans in the form of caretakers, caseworkers, social workers, physical therapy, oxygen delivery, medical equipment. How do I know? We rented to a homeless veteran one-bedroom apartment a couple of years ago through the Catholic Social Services, and I was astounded at the amount of traffic, people and cars coming and going, psychiatry volunteers, transport vans to get, and taxis to get them back and forth to their appointments at the VA, taxis. If there's a medical emergency such as a fall, a ambulance and a fire truck will show up. And if, if you've ever had any, spent any time at Las Fuentes or in assisted living, people call 911 all the time for falls and medical emergencies. And so if you have 50 units and there's like two account, encounters a day, meaning, you know, people, I mean, you could easily need parking for at least 100 vehicles during the day and 100 people coming and going. Where's the egress and ingress going to be for all this extra traffic? Can a fire truck go in and turn around? You'll be unable to put a traffic light on the corner to handle all this extra traffic because Summit Avenue goes across Gurley at a zigzag, and you don't have a four corners to properly put a traffic signal there. And imagine pedestrians that are going to be generated trying to cross this street to get across to the church.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
We already have a very busy street there with the, the school. There's a crosswalk, I'm afraid. All the traffic's going to be shunned in north, down western, and all the way down Summit to the other end to Sheldon. There's going to be a lot of dogs. They won't have any yards. Where are they going to be walking their dogs? A lot of assist animals involved, and all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Katie, do you have a comment?
Yes, we do have the applicant here today, the architect, Doug McCord, is present, so if there are questions about any of the details.
Okay.
He can come up. Also, a lot of these issues that get into the parking will be addressed at the Planning and Zoning Commission when we review the site plan, and then that will also come back to council.
Okay.
For approval. So a lot of these questions today's obvious about the rezon.
Got you.
And just to clarify, the existing zone does allow for multifamily housing, so in the current zoning, it would be allowed in both the downtown business and the Business General Zone.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have one more public comment?
Yes. Tom Roussing?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Sorry to double team you guys, but that was my wife, Kathy. We just heard about the project in the recent Courier article, so we really haven't had time to look into it and research it. I think, I grew up here, my kid, I went to Sacred Heart, my kids attended Sacred Heart for part of their education, so I don't know enough about the project to adequately address the issue of children's school safety, so I don't know exactly who would be in the project. Certainly veterans and elderly are great tenants, it just, when you introduce the potential homeless component, I know that there's always concerns about that, and so that was one issue. I don't know the details of it, but it is a concern. And the other is just the scope of the project aside. I drove by there, and I know the area pretty well. The taller, most of the buildings are single level, that, there is some two-story buildings. This, I think, is proposed to be four stories. It seems like that's kind of out of proportion, kind of overwhelms the area, so that was my other question. And again, without looking at the details, details, I, I can't say that my knowledge base is adequate to address the issue myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all the public comment, Maureen? Yeah.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I've got Councilman Lamerson.
Thank you, Mayor. I too attended all of the P&amp;Z as their liaison on this issue, and it's just the starting process, to be very candid with you. The preliminary plat is not the final plat. What it does do is it ferrets out some of what's coming down the pike, and if, George, if you wouldn't mind, please, I mean, hopefully I didn't miss anything here that the folks that did their presentation of what their intent is, is that it's 55 years old plus, it's senior citizen veterans. It's not just any veteran. It's limited to 55 years old plus.
That's correct. It's based upon a particular grant that's available through the State Department of Housing.
And if I'm not mistaken, there's a contract, I think it's 30 years, if my memory serves me right, that it has to serve in the same capacity, serving the same group of people, not individuals, but the same level of people.
You're correct.
So what we're doing right now is just laying the groundwork for what's going to be coming down later, which would be the final plat, where you get into the, the details of what's actually being proposed and how it's being proposed.
The next step of this process is exactly that. There will be a site plan resubmitted back to our Planning Commission. Discussion will occur about all of those things that affect a site plan like access and parking. All of that will be reviewed.
And that's where all the mitigation of traffic and calmers or lights or ingress egress and all that stuff.
Will be recommended.
And what the development itself would be required to do is to aspire to growth pays for growth by our, oh, whatever it is there that we do, the charter.
And the general plan also specifies that, so yes.
Right, so, so, you know, right now, we're just, and I just want to share that with my fellow council, that we're just right here now getting in the preliminary of it.
And, and as Ms. Peterson told you earlier in the presentation, that will come to you as part of the review and approval process along with water service agreement and a final approval by this body.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 2018-1611, rezoning property at West Gurley Street and Summit Avenue from Business General to Downtown Business.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Move on to item 11J.
Approval amendment for potable water with Habitat for Humanity for the Madison Park Cottages at Short Street and Madison Avenue.
Good morning, or afternoon, Mayor. You got it? Mark's setting me up with the technology. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is Madison Park Cottages, the closest major intersections are Sheldon and North Monizuma. They're seeking a one-time, one-year extension to their contract. It's in accordance with city water policy, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a speaker card.
Yep.
Daniel Mattson?
Good afternoon. You know, this is a Habitat for Humanity project. I've been to the site, I've looked it over. I was at the planning meetings and all this. This is going to be such a neat development, and it's, it's using a site that would be hard to use other than the way they're planning on using it. I really recommend that it be approved. It's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank, thank you. Leslie, could you just go over again, you know, one time we said we didn't want to extend any of the contracts, actually why this extension is being requested and what, what by ordinance or rule, the authority, policy, the authorities there to ask for this?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to. I'm going to put up just the policy statement here. It's Policy Seven, a request for a one-time extension of alternative water contract if permitted according to Attachment Five may be made prior to the expiration date of the contract. The granting of any and all extensions shall be subject to the availability of alternative water. So this project had come to you in December 19, 2017, seeking a development agreement adjustment, and the adjustment was to defer the payment of applicable impact fees for five days prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. So when Water Resource Management saw this occurring, we also checked their water service agreement and noticed that it was going to timeout, and so we contacted Habitat for Humanity in December and said, we can see that your contract might be expiring here fairly soon. It looks like you're not as far along as you had planned to be at one time. Policy allows for this, and wished them a happy holiday and said, we can take care of this at the beginning of the new year. We don't have to address it right away. So this is in accordance with policy. The policy was done because we knew we didn't want to have water tied up in contract for a long time because we, that limits somebody else coming in. However, we wanted to ease people into this new procedure of the city, so we added in policy language that said, we understand you have a contract, we understand that it might be viable for us to let you have a one-time, one-year extension, and then after that, the water, the contract will terminate, the water will roll back into the portfolio for somebody else to use or for them to reapply for it.
Hey, thank you for that explanation because here again, on public record, I want it acknowledged, we, we do understand the policy. The policy does say you can ask for it, and, but you can only ask for it once.
Yes, sir.
Okay? So what that kind of does- So what that kind of does is put them under the gun to perform. And if they don't perform, the water goes away.
It makes it available for somebody else who is project ready.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Public comment? Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve amendment number one to city contract number 2013-150A1.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Item 11K.
Approval amendment for potable water with Bethel Development, excuse me, Incorporated at 519 Miller Valley Road.
This is actually a replay of the first one you saw. And it's, and they're in the same condition. It's a newer project. And so they had sought grant funding. They're working very hard to meet their performance criteria, but they recognize that they still had some things to do. So they also contacted us before the contract expired and said, we would like to seek the one-time, one-year extension. And so if you have any additional questions on this project, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Good?
Is the developer having trouble getting their, in essence, their subsidy that they're hoping to get for this development? Is it just a time issue?
I believe they were awarded. Is Mr. Schumacher? Yes, sir.
If I may. Mark Schumacher, Bethel Development. We were here a year ago in front of you and we were fortunate enough to get rezoning and get water credits and get-
Could you come to the podium, please? Thank you.
Mark Schumacher, Bethel Development. I won't repeat what I just said. We did get our funding from the state. We were awarded tax credits the end of June last year. We are ready to file building permits the, by the middle of April. So we're, we're making progress. It's taken longer than I thought it would, to be honest with you. There's always issues. Design, we've been working closely with the Public Works Department on extension of city public utilities. And I think we're getting that well in hand.
Has the city been helpful and cooperative?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Good. I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission when I saw this come forward, come to them. So I think it's needed and it's good use of that property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Public comment?
Mayor, I have one speaker card. Daniel Matson.
Good afternoon. We're, we in the helps community are really looking forward to this project. We expect it to be a great help to our community. In the general plan, we talked about a greater need for workforce housing. And this is just exactly the sort of thing that we were talking about wanting. And it's in a wonderful location. We have a great need for these units. So please do approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve amendment two to city contract number 2017-205A2.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Leslie. All right, we're going to move on to item 11L. Is that right? Yes.
Update on public safety personnel retirement system, dedicated tax and payments to the PSPRS trust funds.
Yeah, thank you, Mark, for being here. You know, we wanted to make sure that the public knew what's going on with PSPRS. It's a very, very important issue for our city. It's very important that we continue to maintain our payments from the general fund to PSPRS. It was something that's very important to, I believe, all the council. And so this is something that we asked Mark to come and do so we can make sure that we're continuing to maintain those payments from the general fund on a regular basis. And we'll probably do this maybe quarterly or something. We can talk about that later, but thanks for being here.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Mark Woodfell, Budget and Finance Director. Again, just a real quick update. I have on the screen the payments that we've made to PSPRS so far this year as of yesterday. Of course, $11 million from the Fund Balance Reserve, the amount that we got for the fire station on Sixth Street, as well as the hot shot buggies. We have received the notice, Saturday it came in, on the first month's collection of our three-quarters cent sales tax. And we collected $910,298, which is right on projections for what we projected it would bring in. So that's good. And that's already been sent off to PSPRS to be credited against unfunded liability. And that shows a total of $12.5 million of additional payments that we've made to PSPRS this fiscal year to date. Our annual required contribution, as the mayor mentioned, and as we are aware, council wants to continue to pay those out of the operating funds above the unfunded payments. Those are coming out of the general fund primarily, but there's a few other operating funds, airport and grants. But we've made 5.3 million to date to PSPRS out of those funds. And as we are putting together the 2019 budget, which will be coming to council in May, we are budgeting those, those, that ARC, that annual required contribution to continue to come out of those operating funds in the new fiscal year because we know that's a desire of council. So that will be coming forward. So, so far to date, we've sent 17.8 million, which is about three-quarters of what we said we'd send to PSPRS this year. And it's about three-quarters of the year is complete, so we're right on track.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, well, this is a day for us to celebrate. Because I will tell you, when that dollar amount came in on 443, and we've been able to, first of all, at last council with the $11 million going down out of reserves, you know, this, this says to our public, this is what we told you we're going to do, and this is what we're doing. And again, passing 443, getting that three-quarters of a cent, almost the $910,000, that, that is, that's what we were hoping for, and it worked. And it will continue to work because this council is absolutely committed to paying down this unfunded liability. We get this down to a million and a half, and the three-quarters of a cent sales tax goes away. So again, kudos to Prescott for tackling this problem and taking care of it.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, it's pretty remarkable. Your estimate of the tax is almost exactly where you projected it to be, annualized about 11 million. So-
We've been doing this for a few years.
Comes, comes right on. Well, I mean, you had to have a crystal ball to see how much additional tourism and, and other activity would be in our retail environment. So that's, kudos to you for that.
Well, again, I appreciate that.
Borrow your crystal ball for a while?
I appreciate that, but projecting a full year off of one month and January is our lowest month is a little dangerous, but I, I was relieved it came in so close to what we-
We expect our fiscal year ARC to be about six and a half.
The fiscal 19 ARC is currently the full ARC, normal cost and retirement. This year was 7.8 in fiscal 18. We're projecting it to be about 8 million next year. And again, we are projecting that to come out of our operating funds.
Well, I brought this up to the PSPRS board last week when we met with them. And I just want to reemphasize how diligent we have to be with our commitment to the ARC payment and our additional payments. Because last fiscal year, PSPRS had one of its best years in probably 15 years. They produced an 11.85% return on their investment portfolio, net of fees. And that's great. Really good. However, the entire system's funding liability went, went down. So the unfunded liability grew by 1.2%. Our city was closer to 2% on that. So even in a great year, we're still not getting above water. So this year currently, I think everybody's pretty pleased with the performance of the stock market, but planning on that to continue for the rest of the course of this tax for another nine and a half years, we have to be a little more conservative for that. So let's not get too relaxed and happy on these issues. If we can stay diligent and stay disciplined, then I think we've got a shot at, at hitting this million-dollar net liability. So approximately $10 million of additional funding will raise our funding level approximately 10%. Is that pretty close?
You're talking about our next actuary evaluation if we put in-
I think our total liability is about 110 million.
Our total, yeah, the total liability is like 113, I think, closer to that. So the additional payment of the 12.5 or what, what we're projecting, we're going to end this year with, which is a number higher than that, obviously, with about 5 million more in, in the three-quarters cent tax coming in, or 4 million, depending on the number of months. We would expect to see a pretty significant reduction. We're about 30% funded now. So your question is, are we going to be 40% funded when that actuary comes out? Could be. Might be close. That's a little harder number to project than sales tax because there are so many-
Oh, yeah.
Items that impact an actuary. Like you said, this year, we had great earnings and that brought down our liabilities, or brought up our assets, actually. It doesn't bring down the liabilities. But we also changed mortality tables. And we also changed several other assumptions that brought our liabilities up higher than that. That's why the liability increased this year, not because of the earnings, but because of the other factors, which were big bites that the board felt were necessary and they, they were long-term. So, yeah, I would hope to see it around 40%, but I wouldn't want to commit to that, but-
Let's keep in mind that 40% is still incredibly low.
It is. But again, that's going to change dramatically over the next few years. 40% after one, yeah, after one year, half a year of the tax is pretty good, if we can get there.
Councilman Slishka.
Thank you. Well, if we wouldn't have passed 443, I can't even imagine what our level of funding would be. So I'm keying in on the $910,000. That's for January. Our tourism hasn't even kicked in yet. And according to Buxton, 45% was, of our sales tax dollars are provided by tourism. And so I would imagine that if we're hitting the number right now, we're going to be substantially over that number when we get to the end of June.
Hope so.
Well, thank you for your comments, Councilman. Substantially is not a quantifiable number as an accountant, but no, I-
It's in the eye of the beholder, right, Mark?
Again, trying to project, trying to project six months or a year based on one month's receipts is difficult. I will let you know that typically 7.2% of our annual revenue in sales tax is collected in this month in January. It is our lowest collection month of the year because of the sales activity in January is always less. So it does look promising that it will be good, but it's really hard to make that projection with one month. I'll talk to you in two more months when I have three months.
Thank you. One of the things that I want to let people know is, is that we are not going to let PSPRS off the hook. We're going to constantly be looking at them through a little microscope and realistically, we made the promise to the people that when they passed 443, we, we would not let this go. And so I guarantee you, we're going to follow through with our promise.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, and that was kind of my point, too, is the city, we've done our part on this. And now it's time for the state legislature to step up and to do their part. And so anything that we can do to keep that pressure on, to continue to work with our public safety individuals and, and let's keep this on our focus. I haven't heard a lot about it lately, so I'm a little concerned, but good job.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, thank you for the report. We will likely be having you come back periodically to keep us up to speed with the projections that we're all hopeful for. And it cannot be overstated how much I appreciate those that supported 443 and a community that supported 443 to put us in this kind of position. So thank you to anyone who was supportive of 443. I appreciate that. All right, let's move on. Best for last, Mr. Tyler Goodman.
I always appreciate those introductions, Mayor. I'll try to keep it quick. I know we're getting close on time. As you can see on the handout I gave you, this past week ended all committee work except for appropriations. And in my personal opinion, that's a great thing. There's less movement going on. Appropriations will meet this week in the House and Senate. And they're kind of an exception to the rule. They can hear any bill, not just those that deal with dollars. So there's going to be some movement on some things that perhaps died in committee but are coming back as a strike everything amendment, which I'll touch on in just a moment. This week and going forward, each chamber is going to meet in small budget groups to start discussing those items that they want to see. And Barry, Aaron's and Senator Fan are both advocating and working on the hot shot funds, which is, if you remember, 7.8 million. So we'll, we'll be seeing more details about that in the next couple of weeks. Also, last week, the legislature really focused on extending Prop 301, which is the .6 cent sales tax for 20 more years. And that's raising about $667 million to go to schools throughout the state. So that's what they were focusing on a lot last week. And diving into some bills of interest, I, again, I won't go through every single bill on this list, but if you have questions, please let me know. The top one of interest, PTSD, there has been a strike everything amendment proposed. And what that is, is simply they're taking a bill, striking every word out of it and replacing the entire thing with new language. And this came from a lot of stakeholder meetings. The League was very involved in this, as well as obviously police fire from around the state and the legislators who are interested in this bill. And I'm just going to go through these changes. If you remember, the old bill was very, very damaging and not very good-looking for cities and towns. This one is a little bit more palatable and we'll go through the details. So in this one, the employer would pay up to 12 licensed counseling visits and potentially an additional 24 for a public safety official if a licensed professional deems it necessary. Right now, they have 12. So they're trying to up it to add an additional 24 if that licensed professional sees fit. And that has to be done within a one-year period. Also, they clarify in this bill, which was not clarified in the previous bill, that because we, if the city paid for this, it is not a presumption of PTSD, which it was in the previous bill. So they've eliminated that. The second bullet point, it allows an employee to select a mental health professional, but it does not disallow the city to require an independent medical exam. So that also helps. And finally, the city would pay up to 30 days total of salary and benefits if an employee was deemed unfit for duty by a licensed professional if, and this is key, if and only if the employee cannot be assigned to light duty, if they have no PTO accrued, if they're not eligible for short-term disability, and if the employer has no other supplemental program that provides pay and benefits after an injury. So the League sees that as occurring very few and far between to exhaust all those options before a city would step in. And it's capped at 30 days tops. Because the League was so involved in these changes, it's not perfect, but they are happy enough with the concessions that have been made that they are not going to oppose it any longer now that it's being pushed through the appropriations. So I don't know if you have any feedback for me on that or if we can move on to another bill.
Well, I'll say those are major improvements.
Absolutely.
The way it was originally written, it could be devastating where we have to try to prove the negative, which is virtually impossible. So this does allow the city a lot of options to keep this at least somewhat reasonable.
Absolutely.
So thank, thank Barry for us.
Absolutely. Going down, the sober living homes bill, as well as the patient broken bills are both progressing just fine. They should be heard probably this week on the floor of their chambers. On the negative side, the consolidated election dates is also progressing. It passed out of its Senate Committee four to three. And that'll be, that'll be heard, I'm, I'm assuming, this week as well. That just has a lot of steam behind it and it doesn't seem that it's going to be stopped by anyone or anything. But we're aware of it. We're keeping track of it and we're, we did get the concession that it will not impact our expenditure limitation election if it does happen and if, if it all works out. So Barry has helped with that. And last but not least, our flight, our requirement bill passed its Senate Transportation Committee seven to zero. It was placed on the consent calendar and it made it through that. It's just waiting to be placed on the third reading calendar in the Senate to be considered by the body as a whole to get passed. And there's, there's absolutely no concern that we're aware of. Barry's tracking it very closely. It looks like it'll go through just fine. So that's good news. Other than that, I won't go through great detail on the other bills unless you have specific questions. I did want to say, in follow-up to last meeting, Mayor Protem Orr had a question on House Bill 2479, the digital goods and services bill, the impact that that would have potentially to Prescott. And it is estimated to have a- And it is estimated to have about a $400,000 annual impact to Prescott. And again, that changes what's taxable and what's not based on if it's accessed over the internet or downloaded. And I believe that one has been, I think that's also a strike everything amendment, but I'm not sure. I did not write that down. But that's, it's still alive, let's say, and going. So we're, we're aware of that one. But other than that, do you have any questions for me?
Questions or comments for Tyler? Okay. Good job. Thank you. We'll end on this quote, "If we all worked on the assumption that what is accepted as true is really true, there would be little hope of advance." Orr will write. This meeting is adjourned.